Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Washington State, per federal guidelines, has lifted the requirements for face coverings for vaccinated individuals in most situations. Therefore, council members, staff, and the public who are vaccinated may attend this meeting without a face covering. Those individuals who have not been vaccinated will need to continue wearing their facial mask in the meeting until the order has been lifted by the state of Washington. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wag-agenda. The city council meetings may also be accessed online through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that, I will have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending the meeting tonight. Next, can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. Next, we go to item four of the agenda, where all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, that item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. First item on the consent agenda is to approve of meeting minutes. To approve the meeting minutes of the Pasco City Council meeting held on May 17, 2021, the workshop held on May 24, 2021, and the special workshop held on June 2, 2021. Item B of the consent agenda is for bills and communications, and that's to approve claims in a total amount of $6,186,168. Next on the agenda is item C, ordinance to completion of the 2018 through 2038 Pasco Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations per RCW 36.78.134D. And that's to adopt ordinance number 4537, adopting the 2008 through 2038 Pasco Comprehensive Plan and future land use map pursuant to the provisions of RCW Chapter 36.70.A. Item D is ordinance for a budget adjustment for Grimway wastewater connections to Columbia East Lift Station and to the process water reuse facility. And that's to adopt ordinance number 4538, amending the 2021-2022 annual budget of the City of Pasco, Washington, by providing supplement thereto to provide additional appropriation in the city's Economic Development Fund for the construction of the Grimway Industrial Sewer Connection to the Columbia East Lift Station and to the process water reuse facility, and further authorize publication by summary only. Next on the agenda is a resolution for professional services agreement with Murray Smith for Design Services for Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Phase II, and that's to approve resolution number 4065, authorizing execution of the professional services agreement by the city manager with Murray Smith for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Phase II project. Item F is a resolution, and that's addendum number two to Metro Drug Task Force Interlocal Agreement. That's to approve resolution number 4066, authorizing the city manager to execute addendum number two to the 2017 Interlocal Agreement between the participating jurisdictions and the City of Pasco for involvement in the Tri-Cities Metro Drug Task Force. So with that, if there's no questions or any items that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by councilmember Alvarado. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Martinez.
Yes. Passed unanimously, thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have proclamations and acknowledgements, and tonight there's none listed, so we move right on to six, and this is a visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for a debate or for the posing of questions with the expectations of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by the council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And also want to make sure that those who want to participate in sharing something tonight, again, try to summarize to three minutes on what you have to say, and make sure you direct the council and not any individual person on the council or the staff. So with that, is there anybody here today that would like to provide information that's not on the current agenda? So the first person who rose his hand is Mr. Jeffrey. Come on up, Mr. Jeffrey.
I can take this thing off, I'm fully vaccinated.
Yes, you can.
Oh, thank God, I hate this mask.
So if you would like to say your name, you could, and then you could share in three minutes what you have to say.
My name is Jeffrey Robinson. I am a very proud resident of Councilman Milne's district. It's very good to see you all again. I have missed all seven of you. God help me, I have. I came here tonight for three reasons, and because you wanted a summary, I got you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, Mr. Mayor, you've been darn good at your job, and I'm very sad that you won't be joining us in the next term. It's been a privilege to get to know you, and you've really taught me a lot. And I wanted to say that on the public record because you deserved it. Second of all, I feel as though our city is at a crossroads, and I'm going to try to honor the rules here and not talk about any agenda items, but we do have to get to a point as a city where we're comfortable standing up against racism and making statements about how racism impacts our community. We are a majority-minority city. We are the crown jewel of Franklin County. We are the place good ideas go to get made into reality. We have to make sure we don't forget that. And what you do tonight is going to tell the world who we really are. Finally, and more than anything else, I love this city, and I just love being here with you folks. I just want to tell you, you're doing a hell of a job. It's good to see you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it. Okay, the next hand that was risen was Mr. Leo Morales. Would you like to come up and share some words, please? And then you'll be next, over here.
My name is Leo Morales, and I live in 416 Shawan in Pasco. Well, first of all, thank you to all you guys who helped me with the issue I've been having with the city. Thank you to Dave Zabel that he did a great job with us. I can talk about a lot of stuff. I can talk about C2, downtown Pasco, but I'm going to be selfish and I'm going to talk about my problem. The first thing I'm going to say for the record is I asked for one of those freehold information requests about the complaint that was done on my restaurant, and I got everything. And I specifically want to talk about David Cortinas. The city of Pasco, they strive about complaints, and I understand that. But if you get ten individuals complaining about my business, I understand if you come to my restaurant, the city called, and you do, hey, what's Leo's doing wrong over there? If you can get complaints by different persons about my restaurant, I would agree that you guys can come to my restaurant and say, hey, what's wrong here? Let me look at it. But if the city sees that one single person complaining over and over and over and over to over a hundred, a hundred different businesses, I mean, I know you guys are trying about complaining, but I said David Cortinas, I'm going to say the name because I got it. I can talk about him because I have it on the paper, it's public record. I know he's a person who went and pointed a finger at me. David Cortinas never been in my restaurant. David Cortinas not my friend. I met David Cortinas once in my life, and he asked me about joining some kind of Spanish staff that I gotta pay like fifty bucks, and I said no. And not only because I said no, he went and sent emails to who knows how many people and complained about my restaurant for stuff that he's never been in my restaurant. I got accused of a bunch of stuff that I never done. By the way, that's it done with it. I'm over that. I talked to the city, I came to that, I turned the switch off, I just gonna fix. Ah, by the way, my restaurant is closed. Thank you to David Cortinas. David Cortinas on COVID, while COVID still happened. I don't know how he did it, but he went and complained to many, 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 many businesses, and the city of Pasco listened to him. They actually went and sent a letter to every single business that David Cortinas complained about it. Even he's not even been in the business, David Cortinas never been in my business. So why is it that the city of Pasco, only because David Cortinas' agendas, or I can say David Cortinas and his friends, David Cortinas' agendas is to kill businesses in Pasco, why is the city of Pasco saying, hey, we gotta complain, let me follow out? You gotta see who's the person. Like I said in the beginning, though, if you get five different complaints for five different people, and you come to my room, you send me a letter, and what they're saying is true, I would say, hey, it's my fault. You know what I mean? But I guess the city of Pasco can do better by not listening to one single individual with an agenda to kill the business in Pasco. That's his agenda. David Cortinas not a good person. I can prove it, I have it, like I said, I did one of those freehold information requests, and I have every single email from the city, from him, from everything. I've been talking to a lot of business people. You guys need to do something about when you get a complaint by somebody that has an agenda against the businesses. I mean, like, I'm going to say it again for twenty times. If you get five complaints, or three complaints from three different individuals, ah, hey, Leo has gratitude, Leo is having party at five o'clock in the morning, from three or four different people, hey, you know, you can send me a letter, say, hey, Leo, what are you doing? Blah, blah, blah. But you cannot get a complaint from David Cortinas. From David Cortinas, I believe, so I actually can prove it, he complained about so many businesses, and the city of Pasco came out and said, hey, you know what? Let's send every one of these businesses this letter, and let's make, well, we are in COVID, we have to understand this one. We are in COVID still. That means he doesn't care about my businesses, he doesn't care about COVID, he doesn't care about, but whilst we still in COVID, David Cortinas went and complained about every single business, including mine, where he's never been in my business. So the city needs to do something. So if you guys are going to base the COVID formant or whatever it is, if you're going to base it on complaint, you gotta make sure the complaints come from the right source. Because right now, if I get an agenda against Amora Mexico, I'm going to start writing, I don't like Amora, I like, all people do, it's my competition. I can just write a complaint, I don't like Amora Mexico, I don't like, I don't know, Caribou, I don't like that, and send another, and then the court formant is going to go after these people. I believe that should not be right. I believe you guys should have a standard. Hey, if I get three complaints from three different people, besides that, you guys should, I mean, I believe everybody in this room knows who's David Cortinas now. I don't, I mean, I almost a hundred percent sure, everybody in this room knows who's David Cortinas, and everybody in this room knows the agenda. So you cannot let David Cortinas push his agendas and use the city of Pasco, because he's using the city of Pasco. Because the letter I got, they have, they have city of Pasco stuff on the top, and they have the symbol Pasco, so he's using the city of Pasco to push his agenda against businesses at mine.
That's well noted, Mr. Morales, and we'll make sure we get that noted and work on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Okay, next, we'd like, may I come on up? Both of you can come on up if you'd like.
Hi. My name is Tiffany Feldman, and this is my husband, Tyson Feldman. We have a childcare center on Argent here in Pasco, and we've been working on expanding our childcare center for about two years now. We have a grant through the state, and that will provide sixty childcare spots here in tri-cities. In December 2019, we got a certification from the City of Pasco that allows us to connect to city sewer. This, because we had the certification, it allowed us a conditional use permit through Franklin County, and it allowed us a building permit in Franklin County. So we were like, woo, super exciting. We received a letter, though, just in last week, that said that the pre-construction meeting for the sewer was delayed. It was delayed because there was a requirement for sidewalk. We weren't aware that there was a requirement for sidewalk until we received the letter. Also, we haven't seen any code that says that there is a requirement for sidewalk for new construction in the county. We today are asking to be able to connect to city sewer because we do have the permit so that we can begin construction for our addition to our childcare center. We are prepared to do the sidewalks on Argent. We just would like to start the construction as soon as possible so that we can provide these spots to the children of Pasco. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Dave Zabel. He took some time out of his day to speak with me the other day, and I really appreciate that. And he did respond to my email today saying he was going to look into the issue.
Okay, are there any questions?
Wonderful. So is this within the city limits on Argent?
It is in the county.
It's in like the donut hole on Argent.
Okay. All right. Staff and city manager Dave Zabel, are you aware of the situation?
Yeah, I became aware of it earlier today via email and responded to the Feldmans, and I'll be looking into it tomorrow.
All right.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you so much. We're just, we just want to expand. It's been two years in the making, then COVID happened, and we just want to get the ball rolling.
A lot of delays, yes. Totally understand, and I wish, you know, now that we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, there's a lot of work to be done, and we're slam packed here at the city, but we're going to do the best we can to accommodate everybody.
Yeah, I know, we expected delays because of COVID, but then we were hit with the sewer thing, and we were like, we can't build without sewer. It's not possible, we need somewhere for the waste to go. So, all right, awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anybody else, Mr. Nigas? And then you'll be next, sir, over here.
Hello, it's great to be here, you know, especially as we open up. My name's Jose Inigas, owner of Downtown Business Hydrotonics Water, right here in downtown, and as well as a volunteer, and of course, a patron of the arts. You know, I'm a very huge supporter of our children studying the arts, so that's what I do, and many who follow me know that that's my business. So one of the things that I'm here as a volunteer in the downtown Pasco authority, it's very concerning, especially as we get out of COVID, that we do not forget the human element of code enforcement and businesses. You know, this pandemic has hurt so many people, and it's also caused us to forget about the human element that we have with each other, to care about one another. The code enforcement, I know they're doing what they have to do, it's a black and white type of job, but as well, you know, they have to also remember that they're dealing with people's livelihoods. You know, they're dealing with people who have put their life savings in their businesses, and a call, a phone call, a customer service type of, you know, just action, is something that I think out of COVID is needed, and something that I hope you all look at what's been happening and realize that this human element needs to happen, and to make sure as we get through this COVID, that that is something that will be an action item, and as you, you know, go about your business and telling, you know, running the city. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nigas, appreciate it. Yes, sir, in the red shirt.
Thank you, Jake Dorsey. Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for your service to our city. I start these comments by saying I do not doubt the integrity and conviction of Councilman Serrano. Having spoken with him before, I believe he has these traits in spades. My concern is that the councilman who represents my home, my family, in matters before this city, has engaged in a foolhardy, time-consuming endeavor that not only detracts from his district and city, but the state. His participation in the attempted recall of Governor Jay Inslee is as a private citizen, but it is difficult to believe that it will not draw him away from pondering city business or that it will not demand his energy through, and I quote, "long hours into the night." The recall effort of a governor elected by the largest margin in this state has seen in at least twenty years, during a pandemic no less, seems an effort destined to die as soon as it reaches the West Side. All the while, Councilman Serrano, my councilman, commits partisan effort toward what must be seen as a towering windmill. I fear that the legal lance is fragile, much as it was when he wanted our city to buck the governor's orders last year. My hope is fragile too. I want the good councilman to abandon this effort and return his full attention, late nights included, to city business. He was elected for no less than that, an implied agreement between voters and elected officials that they will serve the public interest with compassion, reason, and dedication. Also, that those nonpartisan officials will not wander off into the political woods when someone such as County Commissioner Clint Didier would be better suited for the quest. I do not expect the rest of the council to hold Councilman Serrano's feet to the fire. Each of you must serve your districts and this city how you see best.
Sure. I'm going to ask you to direct and quit calling one of the council members out, but just wrap up what you have to say, we understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Or we've heard what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, I do want to give Mr. Dorsey credit. He texted me, and we talked today before, so I was aware, this wasn't catching me off guard. I do want to say I appreciate that he and I, as he kind of initiated with, we've had dialogue. We see the coin from different sides, but, you know, I recognize his concerns, and again, I appreciate that he gave me the heads up here, so I give him that credit, so thank you.
Thank you. But this opportunity is for addressing the council, and thank you, thank you for your comments. Anybody else would like to say anything tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Lucia Gonzalez. I don't have a speech, but I am also a downtown business owner. I own, how do I say, I own a bar. I recently purchased it right before COVID hit. I'm here because my concern is I'm trying to enhance, so I own Tipsies, and it was before, I'm pretty sure you guys all know, it was the library. It had a bad reputation. I'm tired of carrying that burden. I'm having a hard time trying to turn it into anything, but it's passed. I came here today with the hope of somebody actually listening to me, and, you know, I have, my concern is, I even have submitted plans for a simple fence and maybe some outdoor seating. And I understand, I've heard that, you know, not only myself, but from other people, that it's behind, you know, people are behind in reviewing the plans and everything. I can't make anything of it if I don't get the opportunity to grow. I, in the future, wanted to make it, you know, a breakfast place for downtown, clean it up. I clean it up as much as I can with the money that I have, but if I'm not allowed to renovate and bring in income, I can't do anything with it. I feel like there's maybe, not miscommunication, but maybe, you know, people still see it the way it was, and I hear it was really bad. I had never been in it myself. I just, I quit, I used to work every day for the past fifteen years as a nurse. I quit that job to put all my savings into this, and I feel like at points, I'm frustrated, and I've made the wrong decision. I guess, I, to me, in my eyes, I wanted to bring a little bit more to downtown Pasco, you know, have an opportunity to grow with the people down in, you know, in the city, downtown, and not just make it a bar or a dive or whatever you guys want to call it. But just because it is what it is, I haven't had the opportunity to grow. And I would appreciate, I guess, if someone takes the time to come and look at it, takes the time to see what I put, you know, into it, and let me expand. It's as simple as ordering seats throughout side, you know, a fence for my customers to be protected, you know, it's, it's, in the area that it's located, I'm sure you guys know, there is two homeless shelters. I have pretty much cleaned up, I keep my alley clean, I pick up other people's garbage in order for it to be appealing to all of us, because I know myself, I wouldn't go into a place that I don't feel comfortable, and I don't expect anybody else to. So I guess I'm just here saying, you know, hey, give us an opportunity downtown to grow, to make it something that, you know, perhaps it was before, and that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney, you have some words?
Yes, real quick, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I have had an opportunity to tour through the place once and visit as a patron another time, and so obviously you have done so much to help improve that, and I really applaud you for that. I'd like to follow up with you after, when I get a chance, have a conversation with you to understand better of what we can do to work with you. I know, staff's taking notes as well, so I won't speak for them, I'll speak for myself, that I'm happy to have a dialogue and understand how we can, how we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And I have some words, but I'm going to wait for anybody else that would like to have some words tonight.
Buenas tardes, Gabriel Portugal. I'm at 804 Road 52 in the beautiful Pasco, right, Jeffrey? And I'm also involved in the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, I'm the chair for that group, and so I'm hoping that you are sensing that it is a disturbance in the force, because what one person has been doing, making all these complaints or having a group that is closely with this person, that the name already was being said so many times, I don't need to repeat it, I think you know. So what I'm hoping is that you help us, because we are into what? Helping the business downtown, that's what we're trying to do. And when we see the disturbance that this is creating, and we hear calls from the different businesses that say, what do I do, what do I do, what do I do? And so you heard pretty much what's going on, so I'm hoping that you have tools at your disposal as council members that you are, together, you're a force that is really powerful, so I'm hoping that you can do something about it to help, and then when complaints like this, you have some kind of system so that this stops and help our downtown Pasco business to blossom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabriel. Anyone else? Okay, so if there's no one else, I want to just share these words. I, the council has, and myself, we have heard, we have heard you speak, and like Mr. Maloney and others on this council, we have visited downtown, and we have been involved, and we have seen and heard the concerns that are going on downtown. With the pandemic ending, I mean, it's just like the perfect storm, and I'm not trying to come up with excuses, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to do everything I can to try to help this situation. I know firsthand how difficult it is, because every one of you that are here tonight, especially, maybe, and I'm sure many more, want nothing more than to be compliant and want to do the right thing, and don't want to have to look over your shoulder for somebody coming into your doors. I know that a hundred percent. I'm going to do the best I can, and this council is going to do the best it can to work with staff to figure out, to put in that human element that Mr. Nigas was talking about, and try to work with each and every one of the businesses. I know there's a lot of work that could be done and could be improved. Our Pasco Downtown Development Association, this is time to, perhaps, that's a body that could step it up a little bit and help our businesses a little bit more. I know that our staff has to step it up and do a little bit more. Us as a council had a special meeting to discuss opportunities with the federal funding, and maybe, just maybe, we haven't figured it out yet, but to maybe create a staff to have more opportunity, to hire people to help go get more personalized assistance, because I realize that when these letters come out to the community, to the business owners, it can be a lot of stress on a business owner. And with the older And with the older buildings, we're kind of in a, we're kind of in a hard spot because. As I say to you, we have to maintain compliance ourselves and there's some things that. We just can't be lenient on because it's the requirement. On the other hand, uh many ways, we're trying to figure out ways that we could. Find a a happy medium to keep compliance, be safe and work with our customers, work with our city. Uh businesses and and community members to try to make it work. This isn't an easy task to uh. To fulfill or to complete, but we're gonna do the best we can to move forward and try to make it happen. Uh I would like for the staff to know that it's all on record. We've heard it. It's it's work hard to try to uh help our business owners, uh maybe work on the human element side so that when we provide letters, we could. I I just know that the letters are are communication to try to get us more involved and perhaps we need uh to have. More staff or whatever it takes to get more help out to our community members and we're gonna do the best we can to fix that. So thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your concerns. Um, I'm glad you came in because now it's on record. And I'm gonna do everything I can in the time that I have left and I know this council is never gonna stop working hard to try to help our community members. And and make it work because there's nothing more than we want than it specifically our older. Communities that have older buildings that need to come up to code and how we can help. To bring them up and revive them and make this place the city that uh we want it to look like and we want it to be safe for every everybody to come by. It just amazes to me because there is still, in my opinion, a little reputation of people thinking that Pasco downtown is not a safe place. I bring my family there all the time. There's nothing better for me than to go down to Vieira's at ten o'clock at night to go get a fresh bake. Uh, you know, with milk. I I bring my, I bring the milk to dip my my panecitos in and I love that. And I love that about downtown Pasco. So with that, I I hope uh that that we can work hard to make it work. And uh we're committed to try to do that. So thank you very much for coming. Alright, so next, we're gonna keep going on our agenda here. Uh we have reports from committees and or officers. Anybody wanna share uh some events that happened this week? I know we had a big one on Friday. Anybody else have anything to share? Councilmember Roach.
Um, Saturday morning at ten AM, Councilmember Al uh Alvarado, myself and Mayor Protem. Participated in public comment for the redistricting commission. Um, oh, did I, sorry, not Alvarado. Councilmember Maloney, excuse me. Um, so we had a little bit of technical difficulty. I, they had me labeled as Mayor Protem and. So, but we got it sorted out. We got there on the record. Um, and I think it went well. It was, saw a lot of community members. And the message uh about Pasco was uh unified in that nobody wanted Pasco to be divided. So that was a very heartening thing to hear.
Thank you, Councilmember uh Roach. Uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and and thank you, Councilwoman Roach, for uh your comments. Um, and and to clarify, there was a a lot of comments from the community. Um. It was interesting because often these things end up being um. You know, concerted effort where there's a lot of dialogue and a lot of conversation that, you know, rallies this up. And I don't know if that was the case for the community, but we had a pretty diverse set of folks um from across the community to come out to talk about what they saw as a vision for. How Pasco could look and so um and it was something that that one of the commissioners said, um, you know, we're we're listening and specifically with Pasco, reference Pasco that. We were looking at the map where we're having this conversation to understand better what what's Pasco, what's going on, where are the districts? How does it look in the tri-cities and with Pasco specifically? So I thought it was, I thought it was really interesting that the um commissioners saw fit to specifically call out that they were looking towards Pasco. Um, I know they have received a lot of comment about the um um that Yakima area. Um, and especially with the um Yak Yakima um tribal nation and what where those districts are are drawn. It sounded kind of like maybe the commissioners had heard that loud and clear um and more than one forum. And may and maybe that just hearing from a number of Pasco residents um was was a little bit different for them, so. Um, again, we made, we were, we were clear, we weren't endorsing any one particular map. Um, but that we were, that that we were here to have a conversation and wanted to make sure that the commissioners are are thinking about Pasco when they're thinking about redistricting.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Serrano.
Mayor, uh you and I, Saturday morning, attended the ribbon cutting for West Pasco Pharmacy, which is a great addition. Over off Sandifer, across from the um from the fire station. Uh, I mean, they they informed us that uh they take all sorts of insurance plans that are uh comparable to those of the big box pharmacies, if you will. And they also have compounding agents for those who may need those specialty items, um my household being one, so. Sadly, I had yet to set foot in there and they they'd been operating kind of slowly under the pandemic, but uh now they're full open and I'm I'm excited. I sent my wife to go talk to them because she actually knows something about medical and I don't, so. Uh, I know she's excited to get in there and talk to them about what they do. So it was, it was a great visit. Um, I know you took some of those cookies too.
So, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to report to uh council that I attended uh the um eh uh entrance conference for our uh annual. I guess, um, I I I did, I did from uh um. The state. And so uh one one no notable thing there is that this year we are um wanting to go after a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting. And so, you know, looking forward to uh just all the pro uh seeing more of the progress that our our um our finance department has done is is really great to that. We've come to this point to be able to um to apply for that. Uh, the second thing I attended was a joint meeting uh with Ben Franklin uh county commissioners. So they had a meeting to talk about um financing for. Uh options for um a mental health facility, but um. I did, I did uh, and you know, do some comment there as as a member of the of the Franklin ca- um. Um, Ben Franklin transit, um so I did, I did do some testimony there. Just wanted to report that to uh council.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. So if there's nobody else, I would like to just share that Friday was a special day. Uh, it was so wonderful to have. Uh, former mayor Matt Watkins and Mister Hoffman join us on that day and every council member here. To celebrate the groundbreaking ceremony for the Lewis Street overpass. There's just so much hope and um. Long awaited, long awaited activity that uh that we started on that day, so I wanna thank the staff. One of the things that I didn't get to do as much as I should, I I didn't mention it, but it was mentioned a little bit. I I just wanna say thank you to City Manager Dave Zabel and uh Gary Crutchfield, the two two managers involved with this project. Put a lot of time and effort into this uh into this project and I I didn't, I wanna apologize, City Manager Dave Zabel, I didn't mention you as. Much and then I forgot uh Mister Milley's name up there, but we got him covered. Uh, but uh anyway, I just wanted to. To extend my gratitude to the staff, uh Mister Warley and uh and Sarah, uh Sarah Maria, Maria Sarah. Uh, so uh for the wonderful job they did in present presenting, but uh thank you, staff. Adam and Zach and every one of you that participated, thank you so much. Uh, the police department had. Uh, the drones up, taking pictures and uh it was well, well attended. I I'm sure there was over a hundred people there and the snacks were great, so. Uh, for the community members that were there, thank you very much for attending. And again, it was a wonderful event and we were just excited about it. And then on Saturday, as Mister Serrano mentioned, uh excited about West Pasco Pharmacy. Uh, we, I would really love to have the community support specifically, um, well, all over the place, but uh in in their neighborhood, they are. A wonderful pharmacy. They're just getting started, but uh it's a wonderful store and that whole community right next to the fire station there. They're just excited to get to work and uh appreciate uh the ribbon cutting ceremony that we had at their facility, so thank you for that.
One thing to piggyback on, they did mention their, um, I don't know if certified is the appropriate term, but for offering COVID vaxes for those who may need it. Um, given that it sounds like it's starting, starting to slow down with the community base, so. And I think they even indicated they'd be willing to travel if necessary for those who are homebound, so. Uh, keep that in mind if you're hearing those concerns or I don't wanna say complaints, but you know, that may be an option.
And they have all three.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you would choose, so wonderful, thank you. Alright, next we are, go on to next on the agenda items and we have uh general fund monthly report. Is Director Recha on the line tonight? Recha Sigdel.
Evening, Council. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I apologize, my my internet connection is not that great. Um, there is nothing new to report at this time. Uh, Mayor, we've been talking quite a bit about. Uh, the ARPA funds and its impact to the general fund and some of the usage of uh already budgeted. Items that would be eligible for uh with the grant requirements. Uh, but then also additional expenses that would come uh with ARPA funds that I, we are expecting it to be. Um, we're expecting it to be allocated um and amend and amend the budget. Uh, overall, we are seeing pretty good steady sales tax. Uh, revenue, which is uh one of the major revenues for general fund. Uh, and we're hoping that that trend will continue. Uh, and similarly on the building permits as well, which also drives the construction sales tax, so. Uh, we're seeing pretty healthy numbers at this point and we're not expecting any um deviation from our budget. The only place where uh we're not uh very sure about our numbers will be. Uh, on the uh gaming taxes sector and based on um. How that uh industry is going to come back uh in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Alright.
And that would be my end of report unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Director Recha Sigdel. She's our finance director and I know she's been working hard. Uh, really appreciate your efforts there. Anybody have any questions or comments for Director Sigdel? Alright, well, thank you for that. Um, Director Sigdel, um, and next we'll go to the next. Uh, item on agendas, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto and. The first one is we have a public hearing and ordinance to to Verde Club. A street vacation portion of Road ninety-seven. And Director White, would you like to kick us off for that?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Mister Mayor and Council. This uh issue, of course, involves a potential vacation of uh right-of-way. Uh, that has quite a bit of history associated with it. It had been used for decades to provide access to some homes that are existing there right now. Uh, the county ended up purchasing the right-of-way due to a contentious complaint history regarding this area. Uh, in twenty thirteen and in twenty fifteen, uh the area was annexed to the city. But prior to those two dates, a number of lots had been created that did not have. Access via a public road, which is the problem at hand. You've heard me talk many times before about the development pattern in Riverview and how it's going to be very difficult as the area urbanizes to accommodate. Uh, s- sometimes very simple requests such as this one to build a house on one of the lots that does not have. Uh, that frontage, that public street frontage. So um. The agenda report contains a, I think, a very adequate description of the two options that staff is considering at this point. Uh, there is a significant amount of legal analysis is going to be required to correctly identify who the. Owner would be of the right-of-way should council eventually vacate it. Um, we're asking that this vacation request be continued in order to deal with that analysis and hopefully. To come up with at least one other option the council may be able to consider. Uh, should the uh motion be approved and the the uh public hearing is continued until the first meeting in July.
Thank you, Mister White. Uh, I have a quick question um to the attorney, Mister Ferguson. So at this point, uh, is it okay to ask questions about this topic or do we, do I need to open a hearing or do we just continue? The hearing for the July sixth date?
Uh, you could do two things, excuse me, you could do, uh, you could either open the hearing and take some comment and then not close the hearing and then continue it to the next date. Or you could, at this point, just continue the entire hearing to that date. So it's really up to uh council. If you wanted to open the hearing and actually take testimony. Um, you could start that process, but if the question is whether the council wants to discuss it. That would necessarily require opening the public hearing. You could still then continue that.
Okay, well, I would, I would actually prefer to continue the public hearing to July sixth, but I do have a question.
Sure, yep.
So uh and is the council amenable to that? Okay, so my question is, uh, in the report, it talks about um. Waiving the fee for the vacation. But I just had a question on, does that have anything to do with gifting the public funds?
So it can, uh, that's why we have to go through these steps and be very, very careful to make sure that we meet those requirements that are in our code, uh, so that we can avoid that. But yes, it, uh, if you, if you didn't go through that uh very kind of strict process, then that could eventually be a problem, but that's why we're. Working so hard to try to figure this out and, by the way, we have two people who are really spending a lot of time trying to unwind this because it's, it's a pretty tough one, so. Um, yeah, well, but we'll get it.
Okay, alright, well, thank you very much. Is, if there's no other questions from council, would entertain the motion?
I move to continue the public hearing to July sixth, twenty twenty-one, regular council meeting.
So there's been a motion to continue the public hearing to July sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Segmented by Councilmember Serrano. So all those in favor to continue the hearing, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you. Next, we go to ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Uh, and the first one is a public meeting for the Cox Family Land LLC annexation and resolution for notice of intent to annex. Uh, Director White, would you like to kick us off with that, please?
Thank you again, Mister Mayor and Council, and uh council has um received a briefing on uh this item uh two weeks ago, I believe, at the last workshop meeting. But what this resolution does is formally accepts the annexation and identifies the zoning determination through our existing hearing examiner process. And our policy of uh incurring past city indebtedness, of which there isn't any at this point, uh for the newly annexed areas. Uh, it involves um about a hundred and twenty acres at the southeast corner of Foster Walls Road and Highway three ninety-five. We're working with the county to provide um plan review and construction review, uh even though it's not formally in the city yet. Uh, however, it does involve a major expansion of our industrial, of one of our industrial uh. Properties uh located on the other side of Highway three ninety-five and staff would recommend that um council formally accept the annexation and then we'll. Bring back a formal annexation petition uh once the zoning has been determined.
Okay, thank you, Mister White, for that report. Is there any members of the audience that would like to comment on this issue?
Do you need to open a public hearing or is this a public hearing or not?
No, this is not a public hearing. That's okay, I I I won't, I won't give that. So uh, council, is any other question or comments from council for staff? The uh Councilmember Maloney.
Um, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Um, my quick question, uh Mister White, is, is the, so the, the. I know this has to go through the the hearing examiner to for a formal um zoning designation, but the expectation is that industrial. Uh, was likely to be the nineties?
Yes, that this whole, uh uh matter of fact, this area is completely designated as industrial through our comprehensive plan and and it's. Yeah, it's it's a very routine determination.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no further question, uh, oh, yes, Mayor Protem Braz, did you have? Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I move the council, the city council, approve resolution number four zero six seven. Accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Cox Family Land LLC. Annexation providing a determin- determination on the boundary to be annexed. And whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded inde- indebtedness will be required.
Alright, so there's a motion uh to approve resolution number four zero six seven. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Segmented by Councilmember Maloney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, next we'll go to unfinished business and we have a resolution against bias-based hate. Um, City Manager Dave Zabel, do you wanna kick us off with that discussion, please?
Sure, just to kick it off, uh, count, this has been to council a couple of different times at a workshop setting. And at our last workshop, we'd, we'd gone through some changes uh that were discussed at the prior workshop. Uh, there was still some discussion among council uh with respect to um. Uh, the resolution, uh specifically, you know, I think along the lines of intent and and some wording. And um, we had, my myself and I apologize to council, I mistakenly set, put it on uh. Uh, consent and so I pulled it earlier today, knowing that there was still some discussion left to be had on it. And so this is an opportunity for council, uh, staff, we feel we have it in about as final a format as we can get it in. If council wishes to make other changes, it it's probably pretty difficult to now, now for staff to try to pick that up from uh from a discussion, so.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel, and I know the uh, the commission has worked very hard on this as well, but uh this is why we're here, is to make sure that uh. We try to come to a consensus and try to make it uh to where we can make it better for. uh to where we can make it better for our citizens. So who would like to start on this uh on this topic? Councilmember Serrano?
I'll speak. My one comment is looking at section five. Um yeah, after the whereas is. I think that if we took the one, two, three, four, five, the first to last bullet, I'll just it's easier than counting it. Where it says recognize and appropriate act on appropriately act on opportunities to further unity and community cohesion. I would prefer that that be the basis of number five rather than buried in there. Um we talk a lot about, you know, historical injustices and the wherases. And we talk about uh in the fourth whereas, a stronger sense of community cohesion. And I think that focus for me is lost in section five. Um and I think it could be as simple as reading, the city of Pasco affirms its intent to further unity and community cohesion, period. And that's all of section five. Because I think as we put this laundry list, it's a great opportunity to to highlight things we've done, but to make a bold statement of what's ten words, that we stand for community cohesion and unity, I I think that to me rings bolder than a laundry list of things that we'd like to do. And that's that's my position here. That's how I would improve it.
So Councilmember Serrano, you're are you proposing to take out all the bullets and just leave that one and make that one the basis of of number section number five?
Yeah.
Okay, uh I guess it's just a matter of discussion from the council on whether or not they're amenable to to have that changed in that way. One of the, well, I'll go to my question uh here once we decide. I guess it's just a matter of do we want the staff to change that to accommodate that one bullet on um uh let's see, which one was that? Oh yeah, the recognize and appropriately act on opportunities to further unity and community cohesion. What would, is there any objection to that?
I object to that.
Okay.
I like it as is. And I think that the um elaboration provides just better understanding about what as a city um and as a council in leadership, what we are trying to do on our boards and commissions, um in our partnerships, in our policies, um in training our workforce. And so we lose all of that and just become blah. So I say we keep it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Anybody else have a comment?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um although I do recognize uh Councilman Serrano's uh intent with making that a uh a topic, um I actually object. I would prefer to for this to stay as is and to support what Councilwoman Roach just said, it's um you need all of that. You need the whole context of of the whereas um for this line in particular to to add into it. Um so I would object, and I would like for it to stay as is. Thank you.
So there's two. I would need to uh at least have a majority so that we could um move forward. Councilmember Alvarado?
Yeah, I mean, uh reading for me uh uh these uh these points, uh I can see how there there could be some trying to figure out what what does that mean and what does that mean? Uh but I I ha- having gone through all of them, I think a lot of those are supported by other things we've done in our city goals and um I don't have any objection to to the specific points within. Um and so I yeah, I would be supportive of of this list, this is.
Oh, it is, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Maloney? Basically, we just.
Well, I was gonna comment, I'll prove my other comment on on this, but um I'm 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 okay with uh um the other three council members. Um seriously, it remained the same. I'm I I think there's a lot of ways to do these right. Um and I certainly wouldn't suggest that Mr. Serrano's necessarily the wrong way to do it by any stretch. Um but it is this way in front of us, and um at this point in time, I would um I I I guess I'd rather go ahead and move forward. But I did did have a I had received an an email that I did want to read into the well, the record, so to speak, as for this, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Um and so this is from uh um Damian Davis, who's the executive director for the Franklin County Historical Society. Um and I'll just go ahead and read it um verbatim. Uh greetings, Pasco City Council. On behalf of the Franklin County Historical Society, we are excited that the council has brought forward a resolution of support for AAPI community. Uh Franklin County and our nation has a rich AAPI tradition, and America and Franklin County is what it is today in part because of the efforts put forward by our AAPI neighbors, friends and colleagues. As a historical society, we would be remiss if we didn't try to put some context on the uh to the um resolution discussion. Back on June thirtieth, nineteen seventy-seven, the United States ordained AAPI Heritage Month through the Ninety-Fifth Congress from ninety from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen seventy-eight, when five joint resolutions were introduced proposing that a week in May be designated to commemorate the accomplishments of AAPIs. Our own heritage goes back significantly further prior to uh to our county or even state having been declared as such. This foothold stretches from then all the way to today, both good and bad. With recent events and the events of the past as a guide, articulating support for our AAPI citizens during a time of renewed animosity shows the fine citizens that hate truly has no home here. It is with this support and a true sense of community that the Franklin County Historical Society is expressing our support of the resolution so that we can show our AAPI neighbors and and friends that we understand they our history and are we are here to learn from it and support them. Sincerely, Damian Davis, Executive Director of Franklin County Historical Society.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney for sharing that. I appreciate it. And Councilmember Maloney?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. And uh as somebody that uh is proud to call Mr. Serrano my friend, I do know that he has a a good heart, and I do understand where he's coming from. Um but when I when I look at this, I see it as something good that we uh talk about um basically um against supporting against hate and uh I again, I didn't see anything wrong with it, and for that reason, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. So with that, we uh I think we're good to leave it as is. Uh but before we um we move forward, I I would like to have just have a comment that I would like to make to council and see what you thought. Um you know, and I know this is for the Asian, for the API, uh it was specifically directed for them, but on one of the whereas where it says locally, there exists a history involving discrimination towards Asians, African-American, Hispanics and and other communities of color, starting with the segregation of Chinese rail rail workers. I I was, I'm okay with that, but I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on how we can include, instead of just saying Asians, African-Americans, Hispanics and other communities, how do we include everyone who is a resident of our community? Everyone who is um anybody who lives in Pasco, anybody who wants to come here would be um would be we want all these things for them. Um if you're good with the way it is, I'm I'm okay. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it mentions Asians, African-Americans and Hispanic and other communities. And perhaps there's other uh, you know, we have other people from other ethnicities that could that could actually, you know, they can say, well, I'm other community, so I'm good. Uh or or do we just include and or every citizen in our city of Pasco? How do you guys feel about putting those words in there? Mr. Councilmember Maloney?
Yeah, thank you, um Mayor Martinez. I I understand what you're saying, and and certainly I think there's there's other forms of of discrimination. But when we're looking at uh segregation, it has been in our community historically targeted towards uh people of color. And this is talking about both discrimination and starting with the segregation of Chinese rail workers. So when we're talking about the uh physical locating of a community um where in in certainly in other parts of the country, you know, we've we've seen, you know, Italian or people of Irish descent have been, you know, segregated. I don't think that's necessarily been our history here. Uh it sounds like from the Franklin County Historical Society, they're they see the history as as this probably matches that better. So they certainly understand where you're coming from, but I I wonder if for the purposes of this, maybe this is um this whereas is is seems to be accurate historically.
All right, I can go with that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, 'cause I I just feel like I wanted to include everyone so that we, you know, I was just trying to avoid from a different, a a person from another ethnicity coming in and say, well, hey, we're not mentioned in here, you know, what what are you doing for us? Um and and I I'll take public comment. Jeffrey, would you like to say something?
Yes, I am so sorry. I wouldn't normally do this, but um this is something I'm actually good at, 'cause I'm the I deck chair. Another way that you might consider doing that is put and other marginalized communities, because if the concern, Mr. Mayor, that you're expressing is that we may end up with other marginalized groups that have faced a history of discrimination coming into our city and feeling as though this very well-written proclamation doesn't necessarily cover them. If you were to put a statement in there and you were to change it to and other marginalized communities, you achieve exactly what you want because you are acknowledging other marginalized communities that may not have um been the specific subject of this resolution r- resolution, but you are including them. So one simple word change, you could be perceived as adding the LGBTQ community, the LDS community that was chased out of Missouri. There's all kinds of marginalization going on, but you wouldn't have to dilute it. You could just make one simple word uh change that would include everyone while keeping the emphasis that we need to place, given the events we have witnessed of late.
Thank you so much, Jeffrey.
I'm gonna just sit down now.
We're just good with add- adding marginalized communities. So with go ahead.
So would it be and other marginalized communities and strike of color? I mean, as as uh Mr. Robinson offered, it's not specific to race. Uh you know, as he insinuated, there's sexual orientation, there are religious preferences. And so I the way I understood the comment would be and other marginalized communities, and it doesn't have to be of color. So, okay, I just.
No, that's a good point. Um.
So it'd be other marginalized communities and strike of color. You have marginalized before communities and strike of color.
Um I might I might point out that Mr. Robinson looked like he's gonna fare to burst if we um don't give him a chance to clarify what he was saying. Um if Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yes, thank you.
Boy, if you told me three years ago, right, um you could do it that way, Councilmember Serrano. You could also, in theory, leave it in, because if you were to leave that in, you are adding further emphasis to racial and ethnic disparity. But if you if you leave the part of it, and please for the love of God, 'cause I have a massive headache, forgive me if I say this wrong. But if you were to leave the communities of color comment in there and the marginalized communities, you still maintain the racial uh emphasis. It doesn't exactly sound as pretty as what you just described, but you can do it. That's option one. Option two is you take it out uh and you just put and other marginalized communities. It's up to you and the message that you folks want to send. I do want to reiterate, this is a really well-written resolution. I'm sorry, I just I enjoyed reading it lots, but anyway, I'm gonna go sit down again, but if you need me, call me back up.
So thank you. So let's so let's uh if if there's no objection to add marginalized communities uh starting with segregation. We're good with that? All right, so if that's okay.
Actually, I'm not good with that.
Oh, okay.
So where what what are you suggesting again? Just marginalized communities after?
Well, the suggestion is and other marginalized communities starting with segregation, but how we're trying to make make sense of it, and other marginalized communities of color? Do we want to say other marginalized communities of color, or do we want of of everything?
Let's just say communities of color and other marginalized people.
Okay, so Hispanics and communities of color, of color and marginalized communities. Does that work?
Yes.
Do we take note of that, staff?
So yeah, technically, there would just need to be a motion in second for the amended change, and then you could vote on the amended resolution. So you need to vote to amend it.
Okay. So the final wording would be?
May I make a motion?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'd like I'd like to make a motion. I move to amend the resolution um looking at the the last whereas on the first page page of the resolution to read. Whereas locally, there exists a history involving discrimination towards Asians, African-Americans, Hispanics, other communities of color and other marginalized communities, starting with the segregation of Chinese rail workers to the east of railroad in the in the late eighteen eighties, such that the people and governments of Pasco and the Tri-Cities region to this day continue to work together to correct and overcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. Did we get that on record, staff? Did we pick that up? All right. So with that, um all those in favor of the revised resolution number four zero six four, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, so we got that taken care of. We'll move right along to item number eleven, new business. Uh anybody?
Uh there may have been some other community members that were wanting, I saw a hand go up about money to speak on that last topic.
Oh, on the last topic?
Yes.
Okay, co- come on up. Yeah, I didn't see you from the table here. It's blocked to view here. I'm sorry. So so this is pertaining to um the previous ru- the previous topic on the resolution, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Good evening, um uh Mayor Martinez, um city council members, um staff and also um city of Pasco public. My name is Kim Lerman. I've been a longtime resident of Pasco for about eighteen years. Um I am absolutely encouraged by the words I hear from you guys, the hearts you guys put forward to um take so seriously the email that I sent late March um regarding um the six Asian women that lost their life um due to a massacre, due to a hate-filled crime. And um I was hoping to see some sort of public announcement of denouncing hate. Um but I didn't hear it, and so that therefore I put forward the email. And what I saw returned and what I felt in my heart was this encompassing love for all of our members, all of our community members here in Pasco, that their safety is important, important to each one of you guys. Because you guys are more than just talking heads about balancing budgets and streets and um upcoming policies that is going to um you guys navigate what the city's gonna look like now and also for the future. And so I want to thank you guys for taking those concerns. Um if it's okay to go ahead and thank Mr. Zabel for the lengthy phone calls back and um diving into the research, talking to um Chief Roski um about what is our current statistics for um Asian-based hate or um other crime um hate-based crimes. Um and as we started talking, we learned that what I know from my own children's experiences, what I know from as a former teacher here in Pasco, what I know as a volunteer coach for students here in Pasco that represent a ray of colors. They don't know what we know, and that is that the communication from us as individuals, and you guys have expressed that also. You as individuals that have um suffered from um hate-based um biasness isn't communicated up to the police department. How do we change that? How do we end up having our elected officials know how to be able to communicate that out properly and be able to advocate for others so that for they know how to be able to communicate for themselves and how to advocate? We don't know. And you see that time and time again, unfortunately, if you follow um city of Pasco Facebook, if you follow um uh local school districts, people are reporting out uh things that are happening to their kids. We have to remember that when students act out and they say hate-based biasness to kids, it's coming from home, it's coming from parents. And those parents that I have seen that have acted out in that way and raising their kids with hate in their eyes and hate in their hearts have been a variety of different influential individuals in our community, from teachers to bishops to even police department employee, on and on and on. And so we must have a way to be able to communicate from the schools to our city to be able to report out this information. So we can be able to track it, we can be able to learn from it, we can be able to educate, and we can be able to build that bigger and better city. Um what we do now is gonna affect in the future. And so keep leading with your hearts. Keep remembering that your job is to keep all citizens safe in any kind of way that you possibly can. And these kind of resolutions is how you do it, is how you drive that safety. And so thank you very much for your time, and I'll leave you with one final quote, and that is from Governor Locke, former Governor Locke. And that is for every step you take forward, there can always be a step backwards. And so remember that as you go forward this resolution, we must continue bringing our hearts forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lerman. Appreciate your words. All right, we'll move on to uh
You got another?
No, we got another hand. Come on up. No, we got another hand. Come on up.
Good evening. Um, my name is Alexia Estrada. I'm a community member and also a community organizer, raised here in Pasco. Um, I also just wanted to show my support for this resolution against hate-based ba- um, based crime. Um, we are a vibrant and diverse community, and if we are who we say we wanna be and wanna support all of our community members here. We'll continue to have this resolution be something that guides us and um, who we are. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright. Alright. Alright, thank you very much. So well, next we'll go on to, was it new business? New business. Uh, any, anything we, we would like to bring to our attention, City Manager David Hill?
I, I did have a item, a couple items under miscellaneous.
Okay.
So, um.
So, go ahead and we'll just move right on to miscellaneous discussion.
Okay, so I wanted to alert the council and, and mostly probably already aware, but Franklin County Board of Commissioners did approve the city's. Uh, Alternative Three Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the ca- and the council's request for um. Uh, expansion of the urban growth boundary. Uh, did that last week, a little bit ahead of schedule that we'd uh, anticipate. I've asked uh, uh, Director White to discuss this issue just for a minute to get you up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and, and just real briefly, council, uh, the hearing was held last Tuesday night at the Happo Center. Uh, they, they received quite a bit of public testimony. Um, it, as I noted, to Mr. Maloney, it's kind of a surprise that they actually took action and voted that evening. I did not expect that. Which was why the item on the consent agenda tonight involving a, a preemptive adoption of the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. Was scheduled for this evening. We didn't expect the county commissioners until even as far as the end of the month to make a decision, but they did. Uh, the approval uh, did remove roughly thirty acres just adjacent. The airport runway expansion area protected zone that would not have been able to be developed with urban densities anyway. And then approximately nine acres at the very furthest northwest corner of the proposed UGA expansion. That must have slipped in the mapping and was designated as prime farmland. So, uh, and staff is fine with those changes. Uh, I did wanna mention that we'll be doing this again in roughly three and a half, four years. Uh, so we get our next cyclical update under the deadline. Uh, but it was definitely good news, and you'll be seeing quite a bit of activity as a result of. The commissioner's decision, uh, both for the hearing examiner and the council itself, uh, regarding zone changes.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
A couple other items I had was uh, uh, Association Washington City's annual meeting is coming up later this month. And so by June twenty-second, uh, if there are council members interested in attending, I think it's virtual. Uh, if there's council member attending, uh, we need to know that, and then we, we do need delegates. And I, I don't believe you need to, you have to be a registered to attend the, uh, the annual, the particular annual meeting. The trainings you do with the meeting, you can be a voter, voting delegate without being registered for the. Uh, conference. Uh, we have to let them know by June twenty-second who the registered delegates is, so. If you could kinda take it with your calendar and your availability, uh, I'll get you some additional information on the, on the um. Conference itself and, and then we can kinda go from there. And uh, probably ask you on the, on the uh, probably the next meeting, or perhaps on the twenty-first. Uh, if there's any interest in, in being a delegate. And then lastly, uh, mentioned earlier, the Lewis Street Overpass groundbreaking. Uh, didn't wanna note that we had a, a very uh, well-attended uh, event. And including a number of our legislators, our, our two delegations, as well as uh, our, the chairman. The House Transportation Committee Chairman, uh, Jake Fai, and Bill Ramos, the vice chair. And uh, those folks were, I, I did wanna mention to folks in the community as well, certainly the councils are aware of this, but. They were really instrumental in moving, um, as well as, as well as Representative Benke. And, and moving Lewis Street Overpass funding forward. Uh, we, we were able to break ground, uh, this year instead of twelve months from now. Uh, by, by some of the efforts that they made on our behalf, and they could see the logic and. And we had a project that was ready to go while others that were maybe scheduled ahead of us weren't ready to go, so they moved some money around. And uh, saved us a ton of money and got our project off the ground a year earlier, so. Appreciative of that, appreciative of having them there. While they were here, prior to the, um. Uh, groundbreaking ceremony, we had the opportunity to take them out and show them on a bus, Ben Franklin Transit Bus. Uh, had some limited capacity, but we were able to show them our three major projects. As well as some of the economic development, uh, activity that's happened in the community. So they got, they got a good look at Pasco. I think the timing worked out really well because they had a very, their, their session was all virtual. So this was uh, the first time a lot of them had been together, so they were all very happy to see each other, Republicans and Democrats alike. You know, so it worked out really well, and uh, I think they had a, they had a good time and a good favorable impression of Pasco.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel, and I actually attended that tour, and I wanna thank Ben Franklin, uh, Transit, uh, they had a, a really. Clean and nice, comfortable bus for us to take the tour in, and I, you know, I was impressed with how many of the representatives showed up. And each and every one of them had a big part in, in uh, this uh, Lewis Street Overpass uh, project that we had. And I pre- I was able to appreciate each and every one of them for, for their efforts and what they do for Pasco. So yeah, that was wonderful. Alright, any other question or comments from the councilman? Alright, do we have an executive session tonight?
We do, approximately twenty-five minutes on real estate.
Alright, so with that, uh. Yes, well, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, uh, we're gonna go on to executive session, and then we'll come back to adjourn the meeting. So it is eight sixteen. At eight, um, at eight twenty-six, we'll, we'll get into our meeting, and then, did you say for twenty-five minutes? Twenty-five minutes. Alright, thank you. Alright, there is, uh, we're out of executive session, it is eight thirty-eight, thank you council for attending, and, uh, thank you for sharing and attending our meeting tonight. So with that, it is eight thirty-eight, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.